Hello, my name is Mark O'Keefe. I'm the executive editor of HeraldStandard.com and I want to welcome you to this HeraldStandard dot com editorial board meeting with candidates for the Uniontown Area School Board in the upcoming November 8th general election. The candidates will have three minutes to give opening and closing statements and two minutes to answer questions from members of the HeraldStandard.com editorial board. In this election, there are six candidates running for five four-year seats. Running on both the Republican and Democratic tickets are the incumbents Kenneth G. Meadows, Vincent L. Winfrey Sr., Thomas R. George Sr., and challenger Susan Clay. And the incumbent, and also incumbent Philip Holt, who's running on the Democratic ticket, and challenger Dorothy Grayheck, who's running on the Republican.
No, backwards.
Backwards. Sorry about that.
I'm Democrat.
Democrat, and Mr. Holt is running on the Republican. And with us tonight here for the meeting with the editorial board are Thomas R. George Sr., Susan Clay, Philip Holt, and Dorothy Grayheck. So we'll do this alphabetically and we'll give candidates, we'll start with Susan Clay.
Good evening, and first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mark, and the Herald Standard staff for giving us the opportunity to address the issues and to let the public know exactly where we stand. My name is Susan Clay. I sat on the board previously for 20 years. I have three children that went through the Uniontown school system. My husband taught in Uniontown for 18 years. He's now retired. And we've lived in Uniontown School District our entire married life. We live in Farmington, Pennsylvania. And I'm a housewife. I do not work outside of the house. And that's pretty much where I am. My main concern is the students and the taxpayers in the Uniontown School District. And I hope that we can just make things a little bit better for everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. George?
I'm Thomas R. George, and I currently sit on the Uniontown School Board. I was in education for 40 years at Laurel Highland School District. I was Director of Special Education, Director of Mental Health, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Director of Cafeterias, and any other various administrative duties they found to assign to me. I hold a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in special education. And I'm currently serving on the idea that we need a conservative school board in order to reduce or hold the line on taxes. We need to do something with a property tax that's affordable to all the taxpayers of the district. And therefore, I'd like to serve on this board in order to ensure that that taxpayer and that taxation reaches a particular peak and stops. We need to come back to reality and look for those who everyone wants to serve and those who want to get an education with the best possible taxes available from the public that we have to go to. Thank you.
Okay, Dorothy?
My name is Dorothy Grayheck. I have been a lifelong resident of Manalan Township. I was a product of Uniontown Schools. I graduated in 1973. I don't tell that too often. Both of my children went to Manalan School. They went to the high school. They, you know, products of Uniontown Schools, as was my husband. I work at Uniontown Orthodontics. I'm a clinic technician for an orthodontic practice. My husband is a mine foreman, and we are both committed to the quality of education for our, you know, students in the school district. I previously served on the board for 12 years. And I think the education and quality of education for the students in the Uniontown School District should be our main concern, as is holding the line on taxes. I think we need to make sure that everyone is paying their fair share of their taxes, making sure that tax collection is a primary concern. And it's, I have a grandson, so I have a vested interest that we maintain a quality of education in Uniontown School District. And I thank you for the opportunity to give us to speak tonight. So I would appreciate the opportunity to serve again in Uniontown on the school board.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Holt?
Yes, I want to thank the Herald Standard and everybody for inviting us out here to give our opinions here. I too also attended Uniontown High School. I graduated from Uniontown High School in 1970, so we put a lot of time in there. My kids all graduated from the high school, from Uniontown. Me and my wife met when I was going to school in Denver, Colorado. We started a business in Farmington, and we've been in business for the last 40 years. We have a trucking company and a repair business and several other businesses that we run there. And we just want to make sure that our kids are getting a good education. We have grandkids that are going into school now. Some are attending at Wharton. And we're proud of the school. I just hope that the project moves along a little better than it did last year. And we want to make sure that we continue making sure that the school project is finished. That's why I want to continue. And we also want to watch that we give the kids the best education for what we can afford. And we just don't want to overtax our citizens with property taxes. We want to try to keep them, like me and Mr. George did this year. We kept property taxes the same. There was no increase. We pray that we can do this for next year, too. And we just want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll take the first question. Under the current evaluation system, 99.94% of all teachers and 99.2% of all principals across the state received satisfactory ratings last year. The corporate administration is looking at making changes to the evaluation system, including multiple measures of student achievement, which isn't factored into the ratings now. And there would be more categories other than the satisfactory or unsatisfactory ratings being used now. Do you think the proposed changes in the evaluation system would be good or bad? And are there any changes you would like to see in the evaluation system? We'll start with Tom.
I'm a product of that evaluation system, and I've been evaluated in the 40 years of my experiences under that same system. It's a decent system if it's enforced properly. Yes, it needs some changes. It's been on the books a long time, and evaluation should be based more on productivity of the individual and not non-productivity. They need to come back and really evaluate the employee, be it administrator or teacher, under what they're producing, not what they can produce or will produce. And I do favor a change in that particular system of evaluation for professional personnel in the teaching profession.
Okay, is that it? Okay, thank you very much. Dorothy?
Well, I think sometimes you have to look at it on an individual basis. Maybe building-wise, that administrator, if you're evaluating teachers, if there's a problem, then that building administrator needs to be on top of it and bringing the attention to the individual teacher. The satisfactory slash unsatisfactory, maybe we could enhance that a little bit, tweak it a little bit more. I know if there's an unsatisfactory evaluation, that there's a plan put in for improvement. So, you know, I think we're on top of it that way. But I think we have to more or less leave it individually to individual buildings, individual administrators. Now, to evaluate administrators, that's our superintendent's job, certainly, and we've always evaluated the superintendent. And maybe, you know, twice a year, I think is fair. But I think we need to leave it toward the individual administrators in the individual buildings and just give them more opportunity to maybe get a little more in-depth in their evaluations. That's it.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah, I feel that after all these years, the evaluation probably should be changed some. And with certain skills that come in and apply for jobs that we find they're lacking in, and, you know, things that we'd like to, you know, maybe changing the way we evaluate students, which in math especially, would maybe help us out. So, yes, I agree that we need to look at this and do some changing. Thank you.
Okay. Susan?
Well, evaluation is a good thing. I think everybody needs to be evaluated at least once or twice a year. Whether the system needs tweaked or not, I don't know that I would want the governor to come in with regulations. Every building has its own particular problems, and to set an evaluation that is blanket over the entire school district, I don't, or over the whole state, I don't think is really fair. Because you don't know what the situations are, what the problems are in that particular building. You have to have the correct people in charge of the principal that's in charge of the building. You have to have the correct superintendent that's in charge of the entire district so that they know what's going on and what they expect out of their teachers. And that's why you hire these people for, and you have to expect them to do the best job possible for the school district. And also not just use the evaluation as a threat to the teachers, but as a learning tool and something that can help them advance as well into their profession. Does it need tweaked? Yes, but I think that should be left up to the individual school districts.
Okay, thank you very much. Jerome, you want to take the second question here?
Some school directors have suggested the school boards in Fayette and Greene Counties discuss the possibility of joining together and bringing a lawsuit against the state in the hopes of recouping some of the education funding that has been cut. Directors are organizing a county-wide school directors meeting to further discuss the issue and have stated that no taxpayer dollars can be spent on a lawsuit. Are you for or against such a lawsuit and why?
Okay, I'm gonna start with Dorothy.
Well, I am never in favor of a lawsuit. I don't think anybody really wins when you bring a suit. The only people that win are going to be the attorneys involved, and this kind of thing can drag on forever. I would hope that we would be able to find a better way than to bring, you know, a lawsuit. I just don't feel that that's the way to handle something like this.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, Phil?
Yeah, you know, you asked me about a lawsuit. I said, this economic mess we're in, it just didn't come back overnight. It just has been gradually coming, and right now, it's not, we have somebody, and we have to take range with what we did. We overspent. We sometimes we have to realize that. You get yourself in debt with your credit cards, you have to work yourself out of it, and you have to, we're gonna have to do something with the way we're doing it. Let's sue Harrisburg and say, "Give us more money," and they don't have it to give. How can we get back on the city? My suggestion was at the VOTEC when they brought this up, is I said, "Let's get her involved with our legislators and see if we can't do something." Maybe this Marcella Shell tax that they're talking about, and we can get involved, and we get some of this, maybe that way for the school district, maybe tax that. But for me to go back and tax citizens and, you know, try to make up the money we're not getting for the school district, I don't see how we can do it. People just don't have it. You have people that in Uniontown School District that aren't paying their school taxes, and if we add more to them, they will, it'll be, it'll be a bigger problem. So I think we, us just going after the state and telling, and the state, they start raising sales tax and all this stuff up to get, it's just gonna take more off the citizens. So, no, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Susan?
Yes, I've never been in favor of any type of lawsuit in any situation. I think what you need to do is sit down, have all of the entities come together and sit and discuss, and come up with a plan that's feasible, that everybody can live with. By filing a lawsuit, you're just spending more money and more energy. Take that energy and make it into a positive, not a negative. Lawsuits just cause a lot of hardship and a lot of bad feelings between people that you're never going to make any better. I just think there should be a school summit where board members, maybe superintendents, teachers, parents, have the governor come in and sit, have the legislators come in and sit. I don't think the governor and the legislators fully understand the situations and the trials and the tribulations that local boards are dealing with. We deal with the local people on a daily basis. They're out in Harrisburg and sometimes kind of forget what it's like being in the, in the ground working. I would like to see a summit where everyone's sitting together and talking. You don't need the courts, you don't need a lawsuit. If they understood what the problems were, maybe we could better work things out. That's how I feel about that one.
Okay, Tom?
To the question, Mr. Vini, did they want to sue because of equalization of reimbursement to give every child the same type of education, or they want to sue for more money to spend more?
Mr. O'Keefe may have the question, but I assume, did they want to recoup the monies that were taxed in this last budget?
Then I would not be in favor of a lawsuit. Under the Pennsylvania Constitution, we guarantee everybody a free and equal public education. We didn't guarantee that we're gonna put colleges in high schools or doctoral programs in high schools. If we assumed the curriculum is equal and the students are equal, then the taxation problem would not be as severe as it is now. If the state wishes to reimburse us on an equal basis, as they give as much to Philadelphia as to Fayette County, then I would be in favor of a lawsuit, simply because I don't think we get enough reimbursement. But I don't think we need more money to spend more money.
That's my total answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll move along now to the next question. I'll take that. Given the state budget system, what changes do you envision for the school district? And if cuts have to be made, what do you think should be cut first? We'll start with Mr. Holt.
Boy, that's a tough question. You know, and I mean, to come in here and answer that and not do a lot of thinking and thought about it, you know, I know, I mean, I don't want to see us cut math or anything like, and that we, and reading, I mean, your basic subjects, there's just no way we can do it. We need those skills. I mean, we need them worse than ever nowadays. And as hard times is, the students are gonna need them worse. And we have to realize, when we're doing these cuts, we have teachers that put a lot of effort and life into these school districts, and they, and for me to go in there and lay somebody off, these cuts, that would be just tough. I just, I, you know what I mean? If we have somebody that retires is one thing, but to go in there with a 33 or 34-year-old lady and have to say, you know, "We're gonna have to cut you," you know, it just bothers me. That's why spending money on some of the projects or things we do, maybe we're not gonna be able to buy, go first class with our outfits for our band and things like that. Yes, I can cut that. I mean, things like that that we have to, we can cut back on. We might not all have brand-new chairs in every room every year. We might not have this, we might have to let that go. But when we're dealing with people's livelihood, which I have to do with, and because I have employees that are working for me, and have to lay somebody off, yeah, it bothered me. When we went through this recession, we didn't lay nobody off. Nobody was laid off. I mean, we kept everybody working, but we had to, you know, we had to do some, you know, challenging things. And I hope we can do the same thing, that we don't have to cut back on personnel to keep everybody working, and, well, it's a tough choice. I just, I just don't know where to start. And, but we'd have to sit down and just come out here and say where we're gonna cut next, this, 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 and this. It wouldn't be fair to get that out there and worry somebody. I, no, my opinion is, we want to keep everybody working. We want to have the kids have the best education possible. And we might have to give up a little bit of ice cream and some stuff like that, some dessert, but I want to keep the main, meat and potatoes going. So let's think of it that way. That's my best answer. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Clay?
Yeah, cuts are, cuts are tough. Uniontown School District is pretty much down to the bare bones right now. I don't see how anything else could be cut. What I would hope would happen was the state would realize that you're not asking for anything more, you're not asking for anything special. But when they put mandates on the school districts and don't fund those mandates, that's probably the toughest thing that happens to the school districts. If the state makes a requirement, puts a mandate on the district, then please fund that for the district. Don't make us pay for the mandate and then have to choose what we're gonna cut on, on the education or the things that, the programs that we think are important to our students here, right in Uniontown School District. And I would hope that sooner or later, the state's gonna realize, if you mandate something, then you've got to come up with the money. Don't mandate and then expect the school district to find the money or cut, make cuts somewhere else. Let the districts do what's best for the school districts. And that's, that's pretty much how I feel about that.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. George?
Looking for reduction in programs as far as the curriculum is concerned, you would have to continue with your core curriculum and establish what is most important, such as math, English, writing, et cetera. Your enhancement subjects, who kind of give us the aesthetics of a comfortable life, could be looked at, but not necessarily cut before a sports program. Now, none of the cuts realistically should take place. We should be able to have enough funds to give the opportunity for all kids to take all the curriculum that we can offer. Sometimes it's a mandate to cut them because the state keeps continually telling us, but remember, the state, when we blame the state, we're blaming ourselves. We are the state. And then we blame the national government. We are the national government. Remember, they didn't force anything until the legislatures passed it, and we elect the legislatures. No child left behind come from Congress. So you're blaming ourselves for that kind of thing. Now, if we have good financial structure and good expenditures and don't waste money, you can have it all that you have now. Small classes, good teachers, good curriculum. But if we're not gonna wash the nickels and dimes, then you're not gonna be able to do that. So therefore, when we say state, we're saying you and I. When we say national, you're saying you and I. So if we don't speak up and tell the legislatures, then why are we blaming the school districts? And I want to get that question out for thought in my replying answer to what you're gonna cut first. Hopefully, nothing.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Grayheck?
Well, I feel that anything within the educational program has to stay. We, you cannot make cuts in your educational program. Now, I know Uniontown has cut and we're operating with less money than what we anticipated, and we've got boosters buying band uniforms, which we never had before. We have coaches volunteering without pay, obviously, to keep programs running. This is, this is the kind of people that Uniontown is made of, and you have to be proud of these people, that they're willing to, you know, stick their necks out and their wallets out for these kids. So, and I think even though we are basically bare-boning it right now, sometimes, if you just look or get a good sharp pencil, you can find someplace else to cut, as Mr. George said, you can cut out some little extras here. Somebody told me one time, "If you take care of the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves." So I think if you just watch your pennies and make sure that you're getting your tax revenues in from, from all sources, then you wouldn't have to be making these cuts, and we could continue to operate fully without any threats of layoffs or cutting of programs. I don't want to see any music programs cut. I don't want to see any, any kind of sports programs cut. But, you know, if we have to, we have to. And the mandates from, I mean, we have special education mandates. Some of these mandates are killers, and they don't give you a way to fund them, but we have to initiate them and we have to take care of them. So if they would give us a way to fund them, or if they would, you know, give us the dollars to fund them, that's fine. But I think you just need to, you know, have a good business manager and to sit and with a good sharp pencil, and there might be little things here and there that you could, maybe not cut, but could reduce, so that we can keep all the educational programs, all of our sports programs and our music programs and arts programs running. So this would be my goal. No educational cuts at all. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Jerome, you want to take the next question?
This question deals with the area VOTEC school. Our resolution was to write before the board to ask Uniontown School Directors to accept their share of financial responsibility for a $4.9 million renovation project at Fayette County Career and Technical Institute. Project will cover fixes to the roof, which has more than 30 leaks, as well as address code violations with the electrical and boiler system. Uniontown Area School District's share of the project would be $74,500 annually for the next 20 years. Motion was tabled at Monday night's meeting. Are you in favor of the renovation project at the current VOTEC school? If you're not in favor, what other alternatives are there for addressing the problems with the building?
Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Clay.
Okay, I had a feeling I was getting that one first. First of all, I don't know why it was tabled last night. When I saw that it was on the addendum last night, I fully expected it to be voted on. I would like to have a little more information as to why that took place or what their alternatives are that they're, they're thinking of at the time. If you're not going to build a new VOTEC school, if you're not gonna be willing to take the share in that, then you have to be willing to address the problems that are out there. Something needs to be done. I have been out there recently, and things are deteriorating. They need to be addressed. Either address them or make the commitment to go into a new building. I don't know where that stands right now. I, you know, I, am I in favor of correcting it? Absolutely. But I'd like to see what the overall alternative is or what the, what's out there. I don't know. So I wouldn't want to commit one way or the other until I saw what the choices were at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. George?
Yes, the VOTEC probably does need repaired, but at the moment, I'm not in favor of having to obligate the Uniontown School District to approximately $80,000 a year for 20 years. I don't feel, at this point in time, Uniontown School District can afford that. We're just getting over, we've asked our teachers for a reduced contract, reduced wages. Some of them did not get their steps, and various other things that we've done without to try to recapture our cash flow. And now we're gonna tell the VOTEC that our part's $80,000 a year for 20 years. The second part that supports my thinking is that there's no absolute that says the Fayette County VOTEC is gonna be as it is for 20 years. You want to repair it and bring it up to date, yet we're looking at, and I'm sure that question will come up shortly, a one-county administrative system or a new technology center out at the educational park in North Union Township. So there's a lot of factors, and I don't feel there's been a complete study. They just said, "We're gonna fix the roof." I think I'd need a little more support as far as our study system is concerned, to let me know, is it gonna be here and can I obligate Uniontown for the next 20 years? At the point we sit today, we can't obligate that Uniontown School District to $80,000. I'd rather obligate it to a teacher contract than to a building.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Grayheck?
Well, I know there was a big push at one point in time to have a new VOTEC school on 119 near Penn State, the industrial park out there through Fayette-Penn. And having been out of that loop for the last couple of years, I don't see where that's going right now, if it's, if that's just completely been tabled, or what, what the issues are with that now. However, as Mr. George says, is, is that VOTEC as we know it going to be there for 20 years? However, on the other hand, we do have issues out there. The building looks good, but it has been suffering lately. We had a fire out there a few years ago. There have been, you know, violations and, you know, boilers issues, the roof issues. It's not something that you can say, "Well, I don't know if I'm gonna be here next week, just like in your house. Well, I don't know if I'm gonna be living in that same house for 10 years, so I'm just gonna let the roof fall in and everything go." Those are our kids out there. We have to make sure that they're in the best and safest environment that we can provide. We have to make sure that they're in the best and safest environment that we can provide. Unfortunately, if that means we have to commit ourselves, then that's what we'll have to do. But I would like to see more information on how that new vote tech is progressing, if, if that's completely an issue that's a moot point now, or if at some point in time, is that's gonna be resurrected, if not there, at another location. But if not, then yes, we do have to put the money into the facility that we have now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Holt?
Yes. Yeah, the vote tech definitely needs stuff done to the electrical because it's a little specific wiring and junction boxes and everything that's in the panels in the school, which are dangerous. Lot of stuff needs done. We have a little bit, our board last spring at the vote tech, we had money we was gonna give, we give back to each district. And at the time, they said, well, we'll use that to fix the roof. And it was frustrating to me that we give the money back. Why didn't we go ahead and do it then? We had some money that we didn't have to borrow so much money. Why didn't we use the money then? We didn't. Then when I come to, the guy coming to design it, he said it'd be at $450,000. And I said, keep it within plus or minus 5%. Well, you see the figures, they're above 5% or plus or minus percent on this thing. It's more like 490, 490 to $5 million. I mean, that's not 5% override. And, and I have a problem with it. We had agreed to that when we, we was doing it at the meeting, and he comes in with a higher figure. And right now, our school board, we felt we need to talk to them out of the vote tech. We get into a problem like we did last spring at the high school. We've got kids in school, and we start on this, and we don't have no heat out there, and we start putting a roof in the middle of winter. I think it's something that we need to talk to, how they're gonna, when they're gonna start it. There's a lot of questions we had last night that weren't answered. When are we gonna start this project? We start that right now, we get in there with no heat, we got electrical coming out, we got putting a roof on, we got a smell in the school, we have a problem with the kids. I don't wanna get through it. We just didn't, our, our school board being that we had this problem last spring, we just didn't feel that we should go through this again. We thought we oughta put the, go down there, maybe go down, off, put it off for three months until we see, until the weather breaks. We, we, if we start doing this in the middle of school year, we could have a problem. And that was questions that weren't answered that us as school directors were asking last night. And that's why we just, we tabled it right now. Do we need these questions answered before? You just don't go out and do something just on the spur of the moment because we're affecting students' lives and we're parents, and we just don't wanna make a mistake. And that's what we did. That was a lot of thinking to go into it and just go in there and make a racist decision like that with taxpayers' money. We're obligating ourselves to $73,000 a year, and we're not even sure, these are a financial figured on savings. We're not sure if we're really gonna get the savings. And it was things that we wanted to discuss with our business manager and all this stuff, and we just couldn't do it just like that. And, and when you're in business, you just don't, you just don't spend money without knowing that you can pay for this. If we can't pay for it, we're, I'm, I'm making a bad choice for my taxpayers and people that, that put confidence in me. And I, and I felt last night, we had to table it until we had some more answers. And then like Mr. George says, there is a feasibility study coming out about maybe something different. And so we don't listen to this, and then just take a little bit of time. We've been dealing with this thing for the last two years, having a bad roof. A couple more months and making the right decision, just not going in there and just to go and say, I wanna go, I wanna get out of here, I wanna go home, you know, that, no, we didn't wanna do that. We just felt we just, we, it is wrong. That's, that's my answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on. Next question I'll take. On several occasions, the board solicitor has reminded board members that comments from the public during regular business meetings need not be addressed by directors. How important is it for you to address comments, questions, or concerns from the public during these meetings? Start with Mrs. Gray.
Well, sometimes you can't. There are issues that you just can't comment on. But other times, I feel, sometimes if someone's asking a question or if there's a concern, sometimes they just need a reassurance from someone in charge that, that you are hearing them, you are listening. And I know I've been accused in the past of not listening to the needs of the taxpayers. But sometimes you just, when your mouth is closed, your ears are open. So, you know, I try to take that, that stand. But I know as a parent, I, that's how I got started, coming to the school board meetings, I had concerns. And it's very frustrating when you don't get the answers that you go there for. So sometimes I think it should be allowed that you address and, and just maybe give some reassurance that you are listening and it is a concern of not only the parent or the person involved, but that you are thinking about it and it's a concern for you too. So, you know, I know, that's tough. It's tough. When you're sitting on the other side of the table, you say, why aren't you listening? Why aren't you commenting? Why aren't you answering me? Yeah, but, you know, when you're, like I say, when your mouth is closed, your ears are open. So sometimes you just can't comment on an issue, but sometimes you just need to give that reassurance. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Holt?
Well, my position on this is I wanna be a good listener, and I do listen. But sometimes I don't have an answer. And why give somebody an answer when I, I don't have the answer right there? I mean, you could ask me a question, and I may not have a good answer. There's things that I might have to look into. Everybody thinks that just because you're on the school board, you know everything and every facet of everything that's going on daily in that school building. We don't. We just basically go there for a meeting, and a lot of times, things will be brought up to us. We have no idea what's going on. So I basically don't comment and just listen. And afterwards, I spend my time trying to find out what's, what's, what's going on. And then I, and anybody calls me, I'll give them an answer, but I just, it just doesn't pay me free to get up there and just, because sometimes I just don't have an answer. That's basically it. So I mostly, a lot of times, I just don't answer. So that's all you, it's, that's all, well, no, that, that's the position I'm taking.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. George?
The public school code already has some address to that, some information that I like to continue to abide by. The purpose of the school board meeting is to get advice from your taxpaying public. And they have a right to speak, as long as it's in a friendly manner and it's in a fact-finding manner. And if they can add anything to the problem on a solution, not add to the problem for a problem. Any taxpayer that has any good solution material is more than welcome at public comment from my vantage point. But as a board member, as Mr. Holt said, we just don't have all the answers every time somebody asks a question. So therefore, the public school code says that we need to inform the public, but we don't need to discuss it in public. And there's a lot of difference there. Any taxpayer that has a solution, wonderful. Has an idea, wonderful. I would like to hear from them as a board member. But if you're looking for an immediate solution, it's not gonna happen from Tom George's dead board meeting. I'll take it into advisement, see what the taxpayer feels about, and whatever the problem is, try to work out a solution at another point in time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mrs. Clay?
Yes, Union Town School Board meetings have two public comments. One at the beginning of the meeting, and that is for agenda items only. And I believe that if someone comes to a board meeting and they present a question about an item that's on the agenda, that board should know what their, what their thinking is and what they're planning on doing. You can't have every individual board member address the problem, but maybe the chairman of that committee or the president of the board could address that particular issue. Sometimes you can't because it's a legal problem and you can't address that publicly. I do think that the public does have the right to know what's going on before the board does vote on something. And really, that's the only time that the public has a chance to speak to the board. The board is only in power when they're sitting at that board table. You don't have the right individually when you're home or, or whatever, to, to tell people what the board's gonna do or what's gonna happen. You don't know that. But sitting at that board table, you've got the agenda in front of you, you know what's coming down. If they ask you a specific question, I think somebody sitting at the table should give an answer. The second public comment comes at the end of the meeting, and that's for anything that anybody wants to bring to the attention of the board. That is public comment. You don't always have the answers there, and I think at that point, that's the public's responsibility to bring an item to the board's, to the board so that they know what's going on or what their concerns are. And maybe at the next board meeting or work session, then those, those questions could be answered. If you have an answer, give it to them. But when it's coming off the floor, there's a lot of facets to the school district, and you just don't know, don't have all the answers. But I do think you should be courteous and listen and at least look into what those problems are and maybe come up with a solution or an answer at a later date.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jerome, you wanna take the next question?
The start of this school year, high school students had to be delayed because of problems with the renovation project. Do you think these problems could have been avoided? And what are your thoughts in general about the high school renovation?
Start with Mr. Holt.
Yes. Think those problems could have been, yes, they should have been. They should never went as far as it did. But I can't comment too much, okay? So we gotta watch what we say, you know? And some of the things that happened, yes, that we weren't happy with. Me and Mr. George were very upset, so. And basically, it goes back to where I say with the vote tech, some things we wanna watch so we don't, we, if you make a mistake in the past, you wanna rectify, and you wanna learn from your past mistakes. So we've learned a little bit. And some, you know, and I gotta make a comment that our student representative comes to the board meeting. I really like the way they give us, this boy this year's really putting some thought into his question, and in the past, they have too. And he's addressed some of the questions and problems we have in the school. And that's really, we really like it. I, I just wanna give that to, and some of this was addressed even at our, in these meetings we've had so far this year about our starting late and stuff. So, yeah, and I really appreciate when, when the students get involved like they do and give him a question like that he proposed to us. So, yeah, and I, for this building project, yes, I think we're doing a really a nice job. I mean, I don't find anything fault with the, the project. I just, my problem is, I have a problem with all the change orders. And I mean, and some of the stuff that's went on. So I gotta basically stop there. I mean, I can't answer anything else because of, it just, I get myself in trouble. Thank you.
Are you concerned about possible legal ramifications?
I don't know. I don't, I can't say that. I mean, I'm just saying that I can't comment much more than that we were very upset, we're still upset. But as long as they do a good job, maybe we can get everything heist out and everything will work out good. I just wanna make sure we get our basketball court going for this season. And that's our next project that's got us worried. And we've been, Mr. George, he's been talking about that.
Okay.
It may seem trivial, but everybody I've talked to wants to know, why did you get rid of the steps? That was Union Town High School's steps.
How was that?
Well, we are, we are making a design change here. You know that, to make it look like steps. We are working on that, okay? The reason you, we had to do away with the steps is, you know, you can't have, you have to have accessible for handicaps. And I mean, with the steps the way they were, it just wouldn't work out. And when you do renovations, you have to do it. So we're trying to build it, so we're gonna bring it, look like steps coming down. Yes, we love the step, but I can't help but make rules. You know, you have the EPA. Yeah, you can't just do the stuff you used to do. You understand what I mean? And same way with when you're redoing a building. You gotta abide by the codes.
Regulation nation.
Yes, it's regulation, regulation. My son's building a new house, and so we have to go by the regulations that they set forth, or he's not allowed to build.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. George?
There is a lot of agreement on the construction at Union Town High School. For some reason or other, this is the only time that a school board member is pretty much tied to legal documentation. If I have to tell you what I got to say, Mr. Holt may go to jail. But on a serious note, yes, we are having some construction problems. We're getting them worked out, and hopefully, at the end product will be as good as when we started and much, much more better. But the idea was, we were told to watch what we say because there could be legal ramifications for a sitting board member, not for the taxpayer, but for a sitting board member. Because in the end, if we're still sitting board members, we'll have to make the decision on payments. And that's when the idea will come forth. This is my third project. I was with two at Laurel Highlands and one here. Nothing's different. We've had problems with contractors and how it goes up and how much dust and et cetera. Deadlines are always a problem. Because no matter how much you rush, you pay. You can't call out three more men because three more dollars you gotta pay out, et cetera. So technically speaking, yes, we do have some problems there. We're working on correcting them. We, hopefully, the final product is all corrected. Some good news is that at this point in time, we still have money left in the contingency fund for each building. We haven't spent all that money that was put in the budget for contingency operations. Now, how much that'll stay there when the end product comes is yet to remain to be seen. But we are happy and unhappy with the way the thing is going. Hopefully, the end product will give you back the image of the Union Town steps. Nobody asked if the bricks are gonna fall, they just asked where the steps are. And I think that's great. I think the tradition and the culture is just great.
That's on everybody's high school rings back in the day. You know, you had those steps, that front foyer there.
Yes. But due to some foundation problems too there, that they just couldn't correct. But I think the design, I saw on paper anyway, you're gonna have steps and a nice planner up there, et cetera, below the new light. I think the taxpayer will be satisfied once they see it, but not us old people who know the steps. That's not a very good answer, Mr. Editor, but it's an answer.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, Mrs. Clay?
Yes, actually, I don't think the steps were a trivial comment at all. Back when we first looked at the high school project and starting the high school project, that was a very big concern of mine. I had even stated that we can do anything we want with that building, but the minute you touch those steps, there's going to be a problem. And I believed it then, and I believe it now. Not only is it something that's on their, their high school rings, it's where all the pictures were taken. It, it goes back to the time when the building was built. I mean, everything you've ever seen, everything you know, don't even talk about Union Town School District. Talk about Union Town Fayette County. That is one of the most famous parts of this whole county, and to destroy that was just, was heartbreaking. Now, back to the original part of the question, if I remember it correctly. The delay of school, yeah, that, I'm sorry to see that happen. And that's why you do all the planning, that's why you sit with the architects, that's why you send plan cons to Harrisburg, and it takes so much time to get things approved. I truly believe that no construction should have ever been done in that building with students in it. It should have been scheduled so that so much was done and stopped until the schools, the school was in session and the students were there. Might have taken a little bit longer, might not have if it would have been done properly and scheduled properly. I just think there were a whole lot of things that were done in a hurry just to get it done. And I'm not so sure you've got the quality work that really should have been put into that, that high school. One of the reasons that I got on the board 25 years ago was because of the building project that took place in the 80s, when I looked at the building and saw how things were done and things that should have been done instead, they were done today then. things were done and things that should have been done instead, they were done today then. And that was something that I wanted to see through, that the project was done the way it needed to be done. And so that 20 years, when you look back, it's not, okay, it's 20 years and we have to hurry up and do something because it's gonna fall down now again. It should have been done so that it would sustain 30, 40, maybe even 50 years like the other buildings were. Uh, it's too late now, you, you can't change any of that, and you've gotta make do with, with what we have now. The general public probably does not understand, um, the financial aspects of it. Once you have touched that building, now the state is not going to come in and reimburse you for anything that needs to be done after the finished product, uh, for 20 years. So what's being done now has to stand for 20 years, and hopefully it will. But, um, and I think that was a very, very important part. It, it should have been done, I mean, it needed to be done right. And hopefully, it was done right. But back to your steps, now, that wasn't a trivial comment at all.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Grayheck?
Um, well, I'll start off with, a few days ago, there was a letter to the editor that blamed me for the, the delay in the school starting, uh, because I had stopped the project. Well, I haven't been involved for at least two years. And the letter that I had sent to Harrisburg, I never personally went to Harrisburg, the letter that I had sent to Harrisburg, addressed some of the issues that were of main concern, i.e. handicap accessibility, because in the plans that I had seen, there was no handicap accessibility. Um, there were classrooms with no windows. So these were just a couple of the issues that I had written, um, to the Department of Ed about. And the project hadn't even started yet, so, um, to say that it was my fault, I mean, you know, thank you for giving me that credit, but we can't, can't accept it. It just seems like when the project got started, uh, you can say it was cursed. Anything that could go wrong, I think, did go wrong. You had mishaps with contractors, um, you know, it's a, a backhoe or a, a piece of equipment knocking out a wall that shouldn't have been knocked out, or, we heard all kind of reports. I wasn't involved, so I don't know what was true and what was false. But I think it, it was one of these things where anything that could go wrong, did go wrong. Um, I don't think it was a good idea to have the kids in the building. We had that issue with the smell. Was it carbon monoxide? Wasn't it carbon monoxide? Um, a lot of dust. I know when we had gone in for board meetings, the dust was everywhere. I know, um, I personally have asthma, so I know, uh, it's, it's a safety issue. Parents were concerned. And, uh, like, again, this was when they came in about the, the, the carbon monoxide. I think they were just looking for reassurance, you know? Yeah, we are concerned, we're looking into it. Maybe some of the, the rumors and some of the, I don't want to say hysteria, but some of the, the drama could have been avoided if it, it had been handled, you know, um, more timely manner perhaps. But, um, I think, you know, as these gentlemen don't want to comment because they are involved in litigation, and they can't make comments on what happened. But I just think a lot of things, um, went bad from the beginning on this project. And it's very unfortunate. And, um, like Mrs. Clay said, I, I know what happened in the eighties, and, um, I didn't want that to be repeated. I wanted to get the most bang for the buck and not to just cheapen it, because the fact is, you know, you're stuck with this for 20 years. So, um, I use the phrase putting lipstick on a pig. Um, I think I have to stand by that. I, I'm not real thrilled with the quality of, uh, workmanship that maybe has gone into that building. But again, we'll hope, hope for the best and, uh, make sure that it's a safe learning environment for the kids and, and that we can move on.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll take the next question. Uniontown Area School District's enrollment has declined about 21% over the past five years, dropping from 3,512 students to 2,777 students. Are you concerned about the decline? And what should the school district do to deal with it? We'll start with Mr. George.
In the long range planning, the decline is a question I had when I was appointed to the board. It seemed like we're spending more money for less students. I can remember back in the sixties, when we had 6,000 students. And somehow, the physical facilities were still there. Then, now we're down to, you said 2,700?
2,777.
See, I still thought it was 3,000, so I'm a little behind. Yes, we have a problem with that. I don't think it's unique because of the school system. I think it's unique because it's in Fayette County, and we're not getting new people to come in and settle and work. Now, this gas well business may increase some population in our school districts. But if you're working with the budget, you get reimbursed for 2,700 plus kids, not 3,000, 4,000, or 6,000. It again becomes a financial crisis, no matter how much the state helps you, it's still 2,700 kids. Now, you're gonna ask yourself, how many buildings do we need? How much transportation do we need? These are the kind of things that come up and add up to the dollars spent. And that's a very big concern of mine as serving on the school board, because some of the countless dollars that are spent. Uh, we have classrooms that aren't what I think should be full. We have buses that aren't full. And we have buildings that are very sparsely populated, or at least underpopulated. And that, that what keeps your cost of education up. I know it's not the political correct thing to say, but it is the financial correct thing to say. And we need to take a look at that under our program of needs and assessments. And we need to come up with a plan that's gonna tell us how to educate 2,700 kids for the best bang for your dollar, and yet utilize the existing buildings and grounds to the best need of the taxpayer.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, Mrs. Clay?
Um, you know, you're, you're kind of at a catch 22. You need to bring people into the area to bring the money into the area. People, when, when they come into an area and they have small children, the first thing they want to look at is the school system, what the physical plants look like, uh, what the education is, uh, what the teachers, meet the teachers, uh, see what the environment is. If you don't have the money to put it into the physical plant to make it enticing to the people, they're not gonna come. If they don't come, you're not gonna get the money to be able to improve on, uh, the physical plant. I think some PR work needs to be done, uh, maybe with the new buildings, and things will start, uh, sharpening up a little bit. It may entice some new people to come into the area. But right now, just like I said, it's, it's a catch 22. You need the money to do it, but you need the people to be able to do it. And you don't have the people if you don't have the money. There's gotta be an answer somewhere. And yes, the district needs to sit down and put together a plan. What that is right now, I'm not quite sure what it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Grayheck?
Read that again for me, please, Mark.
Uniontown Area School District's enrollment has declined about 21% over the past five years, dropping from 3,512 students to 2,777. Are you concerned about the decline? And what should the school district do to deal with it?
Yes, I am concerned. What can the school district do? Um, I think we're, we're being proactive. We're redoing all the buildings. The mountain has new schools. Valley schools are, have been redone. The high school's in the process. Lafayette's being done, BF's being done. So I think we're headed in a direction so that if people do locate into Fayette County and they want to see the schools, the physical plan as Susan referred to, that we are, um, keeping up with, with our buildings. Um, and we, it, as far as the cost, we have to provide the curriculum that entices people to come here. Um, yeah, you can say, well, we spent less money in the sixties, but in the sixties, we didn't have the technology and, um, so forth, that we have to spend the money on. So we can't compare that. But, um, yes, it is an issue. But I think we've had, we, we've made a step in the right direction. What's more upsetting to me is the dropout rate. And what can we do about that? Um, I don't know. But here again, this is where we need our VOTEC, so that we can, um, train students to, to work in these jobs in the gas industry, so that they will stay in Fayette County, they will invest in Fayette County, and the money will be coming back to local schools. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Holt?
Yes, I'm very concerned about it. Dropout rate is one of the biggest problems. We did, and the one thing we have to look at, well, we have, uh, the Spring Valley, New Meadow Run in our mountain area, they decided that they moved their children from our area to upstate New York, and they're all going to upstate New York now to school, where we had several, you know, hundreds of stu-, oh, I don't know how many, was there, maybe a hundred or more students that come from the mountain area that went to our school? So that added to our decline also. Also, we gotta look at, uh, people when they're going to buy a house, they look at the property taxes, how much they are. A lot of time, people will be going to an auction, they'll look at the property taxes that they have to pay on that house, they won't bid on it. So that's another thing. We also need to look at, I, I, not to bring it up, but I mean, we need to look at how our school district is ran as a whole. Maybe this idea of combining the school districts and getting a better buck for a dollar is something we might, we're gonna have to look into. It's how we can get the students, and we can have more programs and have students go into different programs so they, with, uh, with what, what money we have, better use the money we have available by, and maybe a student that wants to take a program can't take it because there's not enough interest at this school district. So if we combine everybody together, we might be able to have that program. By, and then maybe if we can save some money by combining and buying in a bigger fashion, uh, I'm all for it. So yes, the enrollment does, it does worry me. And the dropout rate, we gotta get that better. We gotta get people, they have to graduate, because we're out in there, I'm out in the workplace hiring people, and you gotta have an education. And like she said, the VOTEC is very important, very important. That's the best I can say.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Jerome, you want to take the next question? And this will be the, the last one. This will wrap up the question part of the meeting.
Some members of the Albert Dalton School District, uh, School Board have expressed their concerns about the cost of cyber schools, contending that they are much more costly to the district than educating students at the high school. They also said the cyber schools need to be more closely regulated. Do you, do you share their concerns? And what, if any improvements, do you think should be made to cyber schools?
Start with Mrs. Clay.
Um, cyber school is very expensive to the school districts. It takes away a lot of money that would be going into the, um, classrooms and the students that are attending the schools. They are not regulated enough. Uh, they don't meet the same standard as what the child that's going into the school is. And I'll further my concern a little bit more than that even, and that is vouchers and private schools. Uh, several years ago, I worked with a program that, um, through the county, and I was going into the, uh, parochial schools and private schools. And the first thing you would see when you would walk into their building is how mu- a big poster that would say how much they were saving, uh, your tax dollars by sending your children to a parochial school. There couldn't be anything farther from the truth. And every time I saw one of those posters, I wanted to rip it down, because it was nothing more than, I don't know whether they, they really believed that that's what was going on. They weren't looking at the facts. But the fact is that when a school district offers something in the home school, if a child is being cyber schooled, or they're going to a private school, the home school has got to provide that to that student, even though that the school of choice that they're going to doesn't provide that. That costs the district a lot of money. What comes to mind is home ec, shop, um, computer technology. At, at the time I was doing the program, was what was not being provided at those, um, parochial or private schools. And cyber schools don't have the athletics, the music, the art. And so therefore, they're allowed to come into the schools and ta- participate in that. That costs extra money, and that is a concern. When you talk about a, a, a county line school, maybe we could get together and save money, we're already doing that through the IU. You've got the consortium and, and that's how books are purchased and furniture is purchased. And in, the insurance is actually being purchased through the IU. So that is already being done. Parents have to understand or have to be educated to the fact that public school is doing their job by sending their, their students to a cy- or by participating in a cyber school, that's not the answer. They've gotta be participating in that building. That will, that will also help the, uh, school itself financially. Anytime there's a little piece taken away from the public school, it's taking a little piece of money away as well. I firmly believe in the public school education, or I wouldn't have been in it for the 20 years that I was, and I certainly wouldn't be trying to get back into it if I didn't think it was the very best that we can offer our kids. And anytime you take those kids out of the schools, that concerns me. You're not only taking the child, but you're also taking the money with them. And, yeah, that is a very big concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Grayheck?
Yeah, um, um, I am not a big supporter of cyber school. I'm concerned as to why it is so popular. And I, I work with kids every day, and, you know, I'll, I'll ask the kids, you know, where do you go to school? And, you know? And when they say they're cyber schooled, and I'll say, well, what school should you be going to? And they'll tell me, and I'll say, well, why, why are you in cyber school? Why, why didn't you like going? Oh, because of this issue or that issue. I'm more concerned as to what's going on in the schools that kids are being pulled out to be educated at home. I don't, I don't see the quality of education in a cyber school that they would be getting in a public school. And I've said, public school is not like a Chinese restaurant. You don't pick from column A, column B, and column C. You take the whole lump, you know? And as you go, say about parochial schools, you know, I know for a long time, the kids that went to parochial school could come back to Uniontown High School for shop, they could come back for home ec, or whatever classes they had. And that's all well and good. But these cyber schools are costing us tons and tons of money, and I am not convinced by any means that these students are getting a quality education. Furthermore, as a parent, you wanna, you wanna cloister your kids and keep them safe and, um, you know, maybe keep them from outside influences. But that's not the real world. You cannot shelter your children forever. They have to be able to adapt in the real world. And by doing the cyber school, I don't see that happening. And if the vouchers and the cyber school are allowed to continue, this will be the death of public education, and that will be unfortunate. But what's more unfortunate is the quality of the education that these kids are getting. I just am not convinced that it's the same, because public education, you have to make benchmarks, you have to meet your standards, and I don't see that happening with the cyber schools. So, um, they, they, if, if this is allowed to continue, then certainly there has to be a more stringent regulation. And, um, but I think if it's allowed to continue at the pace that it is, I mean, there used to be one or two here or there, and it's like, I would say, you know, three out of 10 kids now, maybe even more, are being cyber schooled. I don't, I don't see the quality of education there, and that's unfortunate. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Holt?
Yeah, you know what? I have to, this one time, we're gonna agree. I mean, I know, this cyber school, uh, I think it's a killer. I mean, we have to learn how to interact with other people. There might be cases where certain people that are not able to get to school in certain things, that we have certain cases. We'd have to be evaluated and not take those into account. But the rest of it, no. We have to learn to be able to interact, and people have to be able to talk to other kids. If you have, you might be the smartest person in the world, and if you can't convey your ideas to another human being, and- ideas to another human being and talk to them, it's useless. I mean, you know, what good is this education? So I feel that we need public education where we go to school and we sit with other kids and we learn to interreact and we learn that we can, when we hire people, we have to have people that can talk to other people, have to interact with other people. And I feel that this cyber school just doesn't give us that, you know, contact and idea. It's a cost that we can't afford and something that really needs to be done with. But we can't address it at the local level. It has to be done further up the chain. That's my best answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. George?
The issue of cyber schools is it's in competition with public schools. If public schools offered the same type of program, would there be a cyber school? If the public schools would take care of their special needs instead of sending them to Chestnut Ridge, which is another private school, that we take taxpayers' money and send tuition to them to educate the kids we should be educating? You have to look at the public education system. Now there's some competition. There shouldn't be. That competition should be within our own walks. Intermediate began to service special needs kids because one district had not enough and another district had too many, and they brought the classes together. It found out that it was cheaper for the local district to do it than to form it out to somebody else. If we don't start looking at all the options and do it locally, within our own school system, there will be more cyber schools and there will be more schools for disciplinary reasons or for alienated youth or for whatever reason. It seems like all we do, we got a problem, we send it here. We got a problem, we send it here. That's what's happening. They're building new businesses based on our taxpayer dollar. We need to keep it in-house. That's number one. We need to reassess why they're going. If you have a business and you can't sell a sandwich, you better check the grill. Don't laugh, Mr. Green. If we don't have the right menu, the taxpayer has every right to spend the money on education where they see it's needed and best for their dollar. If it's not in a public school, they're going some other place. So we need to get that public school competitive with a lot of pride, dignity, and quality. And you won't have any more cyber schools. That's my answer, Mr. Green.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that will conclude the question part of the program. Now we'll give each of the candidates three minutes to say whatever you want to say. You can feel free to address a question or just a topic of your own concern. So we'll start with Mrs. Grayheck.
Well, I'm running for a seat because my heart is in Uniontown School District, and I want to be given the opportunity to serve again. Should that happen, fine, I will accept the challenge. And believe me, there are a lot of challenges when you're sitting on the school board because half the people love you and half the people hate you. And you, some of the decisions you make are not popular. As Mr. George was saying about your buildings and, this building is underutilized. When we started the renovation program, that was an issue. And I think we could have probably eliminated one building, but that's not a politically correct issue. But sometimes you have to just bite the bullet and go with it. When we started the high school renovation project, that wasn't a popular item. But I stayed with my conviction and I was convinced what we, the plan that we had was the best for our bucking, and I still think that that building would have served our needs better. But the public spoke, and now we deal with what we have. So I just think that when you are sitting on the board, you have to make the decisions not only based on your head, but also with your heart. And I can say without a doubt, I made decisions that I could live with, and I went to bed every night with a clean conscience. I never profited from my seat on the board. I did the best of my ability. I worked to the best of my ability. And when I got up in the morning, I could look at myself in the mirror knowing that I did a good job, and I was fair, and I was honest, and I was truthful to myself and to students and the taxpayers of this school district. So I hope that my message will be conveyed and people will support me and we can move on. Life will go on.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Holt?
Yes, basically, I got involved with the school district because I was going through the buildings and was making notes on the buildings and things that were wrong with them. And we found so many things, it was just maintenance problem. Wasn't nothing to do with the old school board or anything, it's just things that we weren't addressing. We had a PA system in the football stadium. When they'd announce somebody's names, it was muffled. You couldn't understand anything. Me and Alan George, which was on the board member with me, we had that rectified in a few, just a matter of a few months. We had a PA system in the auditorium, you couldn't understand. We got that fixed real quick. We also had a swimming pool area. When the kids were going to take swimming, the gym area was so cold. What was, like you said, poor design in 1980. I have to agree with that. There was never no heat built into that system, so we'd have heat in that locker room. So all we did was, me and Alan, we decided that we had to get some type of electric heat up there. So we brought electric heat and we had a swimming pool area. Now, nobody complains about the temperature up there. It's 70 degrees, 74 degrees when they come out of the pool, not 50 degrees like it was. We addressed basically issues when it come to, you know, maintenance. And when we did this new design, we're putting, you say it's not a good, it's just a lipstick? No, it's not. We're putting terrazzo floors. Terrazzo floors, anybody that's in business like I am, that is number one when it comes to lasting. We had terrazzo floors that was up there at Lafayette that were 80 years old and they're still, they're still good. I mean, we're talking number one. And when we were talking design, we were talking about a membrane-type roof on the high school. We put buildup roofs on our new buildings. We have the best roof that you can put on a building, and it'll last you 40 years. There's no 20 years to this, 40 years on these designs. And it was stuff that me and, at the time, that was Tom's son, we talked about. And we went with the better design that we could get. You talked about 20 years? We got stuff that's going to last 40 years. And I'm not worried about it. I mean, I look at this stuff, very happy with the change orders, I will admit that. A lot of things that could have been done differently, I'll admit that. But hindsight's a lot better than what we was doing. And we was told all summer, all summer, every meeting, no problem, this thing's going to start on time, it's going to start on time, right up to the end. And that was very disappointing. You understand what I mean? So you have the architect and everybody telling you, no problem. So yes, we apologize for that. We really messed up. We left everybody down. We did. So there's things that, yes, we've done wrong. There's a lot of things we do, but it's a learning experience. We tried to do our best. We're proud of a lot of stuff we did. There's others things we're not so proud of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. George?
Yes, I'm seeking to be elected to the Uniontown School Board. I would like to continue to serve, especially in the area of their finances, their payments, their taxes. More so to enhance the policies that are going to be set forth that'll govern the employees and the students of the district, to be fair and equitable with them and to make sure that the taxpayer still gets and will continue to get the best for their dollar. Don't want to see the expenditures run too wild and don't want to see the school district be very costly for the taxpayer. And I keep preaching taxpayer, and I know people think I'm a little bit overboard on taxpayers or maybe ultra-conservative, or in another word they use, I'm cheap. But either way, I don't want to see the property owner run out of our townships, our cities, and et cetera. And it may help to cease the erosion of the students. We just come up here with the fact that there's 2,700-plus students. You know, that's, Uniontown was one of the strongest and largest school districts in the county, let alone southwestern Pennsylvania. And we're down to 2,700 students. And I'm sure some of our neighboring districts are suffering the same way. Improve it one step at a time. Oversee policymaking, and that's the board's responsibility, policymaking. It's not the superintendent and it's not any other employees, it's the board. And if they don't do it, they're not doing their job. The second thing is, if we have a taxation base, to see that it's put to the best use for the interests of the personnel and the students of this district. I'd like to be on board to see that both of those objectives are met in the next four years.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll conclude with Mrs. Clay.
Yes, thank you very much. And again, I would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to voice our views and for everyone to learn a little bit more about every one of us sitting at this table. My main concern is for the students and the taxpayers in the school district. We have to be mostly concerned with our students. They are our future. They will perpetuate this county and bring it to where it needs to be. We don't know who's sitting behind those desks right now, whether we have a doctor or a brain surgeon of whatever they want to accomplish. I want to be able to give that to them. I wanted to see the building project completed and done properly. If I didn't have the best interest of the students in the school district at heart, I wouldn't be doing this now. It's not an easy position. Just like they said, 50% of the population hates you at all times. Not always the same 50%, but you have to do what's best for you. You have to be able to look yourself in the eye in the morning. I have no personal interest in the school system itself, other than I have a few children that are friends of mine that I want to see educated properly. I will not financially better myself in this position. I've always been truthful and upfront with people. If you ask me a question, I'm going to give you a direct answer. May not be the answer you want, but I'm going to give you the honest answer. And I hope that people will see that and put me back on the board and give me the opportunity to serve them again. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And want to thank all the candidates for coming to, taking your time and agreeing to meet with the HeraldStandard.com editorial board and sharing your views with our readers and viewers out there. And I want to thank you out there for watching. My name is Mark O'Keefe. I'm executive editor for HeraldStandard.com, and we'll see you later.